Yeah, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I was going off that clock, but I've been told that I was incorrect. So, good evening to everyone. I'd like to thank Tom and the Mandat Community Center for allowing us to have our municipal township open house here tonight. I'd like to introduce our moderator, Steve MacArthur. Also introduce staff members here tonight, Kristin Linkletter, Will Bateman, Chris Crossley-Hodgens. I'm Tom Piper, the other members of council beside me, Dave Jim, on my other side, Shelley Foot, my left, Will Kirksey, and Tom Butler. And we're taping this tonight because as Tom pointed out, Wi-Fi is spotty, and that's definitely part of the long-term plan. So it's going to be taped, so that'll give us a public record. And otherwise, so if you want to see it, we will put it on our website later on, so you can view it or anybody else can view it at a later date. And otherwise, I again, thanks Steve for being here. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and Mr. MacArthur, forward to it.
Great, thanks. Mayor, hi everybody. Steve MacArthur. I am currently employed by the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation for the last eight years. And prior to that, I was the city planner in North Bay, Fort Worth, Clark. So during that time, we did our official plan, and we had many participatory planning processes and meetings as a part of that. And so Mayor Piper reached out and asked if I could come out and try and facilitate so we can get everybody's input into this. I hope everybody's here for the strategic plan because it's a big undertaking for where you live in your community and shapes the future of it. For not only yourself, but people coming out here. So I am a professional land use planner. I'm also an economic developer. So I think that's qualified me to try and lead you through this exercise. I want to go through a couple of housekeeping items. The key points of the strategic plan are going to be displayed on the sheet. Sorry about the screen. That's the best way to do under the circumstances. We couldn't find the screen. So there's four main pillars, if you will, within the strategic plan. They're economic development, municipal services and communications, historical and natural heritage features, and recreation and tourism. And as we go through, there's going to be some bullets explaining exactly what that means as part of the strategic plan for the township. I love the township in Nipissing. Just anecdotally, I've had the pleasure of 35 years of spending summers on Pine Drive. So I know the area and born and raised in the north. So also, we're so we're going to encourage people who have something to say and something to add to the conversation. You come up, if you're comfortable, you can stand up if not, but you can come up to the frontier. And after you're done, hopefully you can keep your comments to about three minutes. Give everyone an opportunity. If you have another point to make, just circle on back to the back. Okay, we want to get all the opinions and everything in. It's mandatory that we have a respectful meeting tonight. It's going to be about input and trying to move forward with the township. We've put this effort together tonight and then a week from now to try and get people in a constructive manner to participate in the strategic planning process. That means we're not identifying individuals. We're not using this for complaint. There's processes for that, and we've even brought forms if you want to, you want to, you've come up with that reason. And wherever possible, try to not identify particular property owners or locations. Okay, this is about a great view, 30,000-foot view of the township over the next five years and where resources eventually should be allocated to make it a better place. So with that, I wanted to also follow up on any questions that were not able to answer during the session. They'll be provided in a publicly posted document. So the supporting material is also available on the website, which is some of the stuff they can see on the screen tonight. And if you're adding something to the conversation and we're going to record it, if it doesn't form part of the strategic plan exercise, it may help as part of council policy documents moving forward. So we really want to hear what you have to say, and hopefully it's in a constructive way that helps move these things forward. All right. So PowerPoint presence is going to be, PowerPoint presentation is going to come up. We're going to go a slide at a time, and then I'll invite anyone who has an opinion to come up. And you don't have to identify yourself. You don't have to say who you are, where you live. Just come on up and ask the conversation, or if you're comfortable, just raise your hand from your seat. Say anything? Okay, let's move forward then. So the mayor is quickly going to talk about the mission statement and the vision statement. And if anybody's been through this exercise before, the mission statement and vision statement is the brand overarching view of what you want, what your direction is for the township. Okay? Would you like me to read it out, Mayor Piper?
I can read it if you want. So start with the mission statement. The Township of Nipissing is dedicated to maintaining its rural township atmosphere in its safe, healthy environment through the provision of effective and efficient government and planning for the benefit of residents and visitors. And the vision statement. Township of Nipissing is a proactive community that respects and protects its history while enhancing and embracing the needs of residents and guests and the opportunities provided by its natural resources. Which leads us to economic development, and I'll turn it back over.
On the mission and vision statement is just that direction. It's just, and it's been established over time, it's the existing strategic plan has a mission and vision statement in it. One energy, two. The economic development is one of the pillars, right? It's about growth, internet cell coverage, natural heritage features, as usual, subcategories that have been identified, home occupations and home industries, and tourism. So a little, I'm going to ask Chris to give a little update on the internet cell coverage because we do have some updates on that, and maybe we can start their conversation.
So we've had conversations with Bell, they're working through the entire township to bring fiber to everyone, including the portal for 522, so that should improve the internet situation. We're looking at a timeframe of up to 2025 that should be completed. So that is one of the items. We still need to work on self.
Yeah, and there's Starlink as an option as well, and still available as well, right? So in terms of improvements or direction for the internet and cell coverage, obviously that's a market-driven decision. I can tell you that in the city in North Bay, Bell invested something in 14 or 18 million dollars putting infrastructure in. And obviously for the people who live there, especially just before the pandemic, it allowed them to work from their homes and not skip a beat, right? And we were very fortunate and lucky that that investment was made. So, you know, as a council and as a part of the strategic plan, sometimes there's a need to contribute to that infrastructure and if it's desirable for everyone who lives out here and that, and the direction of the people, then that's something that council wants to hear about, and wants to hear about. Does anyone have any comment on that?
Just a quick question. Just to clarify, fiber optic means that it's going to be hardwired by digging up and replacing the existing phone lines?
I'm not sure if they're going to be hearing them. They may just be running them on the poles, but they will be approaching each homeowner to see if they would like to have it connected to their home.
Awesome, and they'll be wired. I love that.
I have it. My home greatest thing ever for five years.
Do you live in Nipissing?
No, no, I live in the city, but it works extremely well. It's fiber optic, it's hardwired. Doesn't matter about storms and all that.
Yes, sir. El Sass Road, the cable's already strung. There you go. Beautiful.
All the way down, all the way down 522.
Winter of 2021, nether was in my yard telling the killer we could not ever talk about those holes. They're doing it because our old bell pit, the bell pit, the line, the line, we're well past due date.
Oh, I know.
So El Sass Road's already strung.
Fantastic. You know, as part of your economic development strategy too, whether that strategy involves, you know, we're not even talking about business, but as people come up to the community, it's important that they want, you know, if they're building or they're buying, that they have that service, right? Makes the value of your properties increase exponentially. Anything else on that? Comments? Yes, that's an observation. I've noticed the last couple of days, I worked when we were in Bridgeton Valley, that house. They, they're partway across the street, they're like them.
So they're doing the main roads first and the side roads later?
We did not discuss their actual schedule with us. They just gave us basic areas, and then it would be finished by 2025.
Sometimes you can go onto their site and see the plans. There's workflow plans. Sometimes if they're published, they'll be on, which communities, or which neighborhood. Okay. Natural heritage features. Let me check my notes here. So first and foremost, natural heritage features, what does that mean? I don't think we have to explain what natural heritage is, but I can tell you that with the planners had on the provincial policy statement 2020, which is being updated right now, and associated official plans have protection for natural heritage features built in, right? There's a number of provincial statutes and overreaches that make sure that these things are protected. What I think the council, and jump in anytime because I'm having this blind, what I think the council wants to hear about is other natural heritage features that are important to you folks or that might be missed through that legislation, that might be defined part of Nipissing Township, whether that's any part of the strategic plan moving forward. Does anybody have any comment on any of that at this point?
I'm not actually clear what exactly natural heritage means. Does it mean natural objects in the physical natural world? Or does it mean things like the prairie museum?
Yeah, so we have natural heritage features, historic destinations, communication and advertising. And we're going to go into that in a little bit, so maybe we can just, when we get to that side, we'll break that down a little bit, for each of these are kind of high-level view of that. But when we get to that side, we'll go a little bit through those sections. Sorry, does that work?
Yeah.
Home occupations and home industries. This is your home-based business. This is your small entrepreneurs and those types of operations. And then obviously tourism is a big part of the whole South Shore area. And we'll break that down into further subcategories as well. So move the slide, please. Okay. The other part of tonight's conversation is municipal services and communications, so waste their version. We're going to, there's a whole section in the other, in the letter half of this meeting that talks both what's going to happen with landfills and where the landfills are at, and I won't steal, I think you're doing that update.
Chris's.
Chris's, okay. And some decisions and future plans for that. And they're looking for input. Literally, they know what the situation is. There's a couple slides that will give you some hard numbers on where the landfills at, both landfills. And then some discussion will follow us to where that should move forward. Trent, yeah. Somebody put a 10 up. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, both just waste management.
Yeah.
In the township and the land of it, they have a landfill. But they also have dispensing areas. I happen to notice someone who's worked there 10 years ago at the West Farm or that, it was sitting two bridges. They don't advertise it on the highway, but I had to go check a pit. And when I went in there, there's these great big black plastic bins, and they're marked garbage, cardboard, paper, plastic. They got four of them now. You could go on Google and you could zoom right in on them. And there's no garbage dumped on the ground. Apparently Berkswall's house is down here. How about getting a couple in the south end so we don't have to drive so far with our garbage?
Thanks. Thanks for that. That's kind of what we're looking for tonight.
Because you've got brown land, they can, in the south end, where you can just, they're just on the side of the road. And when the pile goes in, you just, which way the pile goes first? So he goes in and just goes by them, pushes his crosswalk back something, and there, you could zoom in on Google, and you will not see nothing laying on the ground or no garbage.
So there's a, there's a couple of slides that are going to come up that really break down and the numbers on that. So we're going to dive into that a little bit deeper. But thanks for that. That's a good start. So I know that when we talk about transportation infrastructure, this is always a tough one in any community because we all care about our roads, and especially the ones we live on, we drive every day. And they're expensive, right? And they're always a problem. Their cost sharing, the infrastructure is always difficult. So the roads are handled under the asset management planning, of course, but we do want to have some conversation around roads and the infrastructure outside of the one that I watched online in preparation about the Boundary Road. I think that one's been well discussed. And to see how to move forward on some of that transportation infrastructure. And also, we talked about some lobbying for some speed limit reductions in some of the hamlets, right? And some of that discussion that came out of that in particular, just slowing down some of the traffic in the area and the traffic flow. Any initial comments on that particular section or idea? Okay. So we'll revisit that in a moment. The property standards with a common sense approach and rural flavor. I like that. I don't know who wrote that, but... So we're aware, I think everybody in the room is aware that their township does not have a always bylaw or a property standard bylaw. And I can tell you from past experience that passing the bylaw is one thing. Enforcing the bylaw is a whole different matter. And if anything's taught me anything in the last two decades, doing this legislation without enforcement is a waste of that. It's expensive. And if you don't have the teeth and the will and budget to do it, that's, you know, you're just putting things on paper. I know that anyone who's followed it in the paper, then we talked about Airbnb and things, and you saw North Bay's attempt at it, and I think they had 9% conformity to their plan. So, which required operators to go in and get a license and, and I think with a $9 annual fee, right? To register that.
Yes, sir. I agree with you wholeheartedly, but is it not better to have a policy in place and give people an avenue versus nothing at all?
Yeah, that's up for the council, and certainly I'm just a moderator. But, you know, right now, the alternative is, is you call it place, right?
It costs the township money.
It costs the township money. And they're already, as we all know, overburdened with many, many things.
Yeah.
I don't have answers. I only have, you know, let's get this out, chat about it and all those types of things. So I, the experience that I have, it's riddled without an answer right now. People are trying. And you have Fawnfield doing it, and North Bay, and, you know, but there's no easy case.
Let them have to do it.
That's strategic planning 101 in a small community, right? Learn from others' mistakes. Good comment. We'll come back to that for sure. All right. And then the last one being housing, right? And what does that look like? What does the future of housing look like in the township? What's your, what's the goal of the community? You know, do you want, is growth? Is growth wanted? Is growth, right? Is it desirable, right?
I think growth is needed in this township.
Maybe mine. Maybe backstories.
Yeah.
Which for the young people, same work.
Yeah. And, you know, we've seen the statistics in my work. And since the pandemic, everyone saw what happened, right? It became a scope and arc, and the investment in, and the over, the bidding wars and things that are happening. And that wasn't happening in Nipissing Township, isolated. That's everywhere, everywhere. I just feel like I'm talking more than everybody. I just break this page, okay? All right.
I just want to ask, for the housing, has there anything, any ideas put in where they might start housing? Or apartment buildings or townhouses or anything of that nature?
No. No, because right now, in order to get government grants, if you go through that, you need water and sewer. Both of which we do not have. We don't have water, we don't have sewer. So for us to even apply for grants, we're going to be turned down until we can come up with that. And I don't see that, when I look at rural Nipissing, I do not see that in the near future. You know, housing projects of that, that's scope.
So why is housing up there if we're not going?
Single, single-family units.
Oh, that's what we're talking?
Well, that's what we could talk about. Single-family units, separate houses, the addition of, you know, granny suites, that kind of thing, everything like that, to expand the housing we have now.
I was asking your services, we need your things to leave, so we don't have to go far away.
Well, I'm going to get to your question in a second. I just want to back up to what the mayor said. He's right in that the province, any sort of, you know, if you wanted to do some sort of senior housing, something like that, they're going to require all municipal services. And that's for insurance purposes, fire protection, all those reasons, right? So really, the township of Nipissing is limited to, you know, probably single semi, if you wanted to. I don't even know if you could do semis on lots here, but single detached, garden suites, you know, granny suite possibly. I'm just going to let this gentleman go.
I was just going to ask if the provincial regulations apply to like subdivisions, which would be individual houses or maybe semi-detached houses or something like that.
So the official plan speaks to how much land you need to, the official plan and the zoning by law speaks to how much land you need to put a house on. I don't know Nipissing's off the top of my head, but there'd be certain size requirements, maybe personalism.
I don't know.
Yeah. It's usually, it's usually about a hectare land, about 60 meters. That's pretty standard. And that's big enough to carve off a piece, right? But when we're talking about housing, it's like, we attract new builders by some landowners looking at that as an opportunity, carve a piece off, whether it's for a family or just someone who's looking to move up. And whether the policies of the council writes into the strategic plan or, not the policy, but the direction supports that. Yes?
At this time, the township of Nipissing does not have any development charges. So that's our way of inviting developers in if they want to come to the area. That's one way that we would.
What would developing charges consist of?
Give us.
Yeah, so in North Bay, that's your water, your sewer hookup, your culverts, your ditches, your contribution to the parks. Yeah, parks, parks in the loop. So it's all those types of things. So you might, in a big development in a subdivision, there's 20 lots, the developer has to pay per lot a development charge. Or you did. There's North Bay for those there as well, to try and attract more. We know we have a housing crisis, right? In Ontario, it's very bad, and that's reflected in the market. And so the council's interested in different approaches to housing, how to facilitate that as part of the strategic plan direction. I didn't get to your question. It's not a big deal, but everybody said senior housing needs sewer and water, but I'm aware of senior housing in Magneto One, Gordville. Yeah, they were built in rural areas. Yeah, it can be done. There's the Ministry of Environment, your communal septic systems sometimes, but they... I just didn't know if this changed in the last... It's just getting harder and harder to do. It's getting harder. They don't like grooming the communal septic systems for environmental reasons and, you know, upkeep and all that sort of thing, so.
I don't see why it would be any worse than...
Ministry guidelines. It's not that they wouldn't do it. That's your only option of here. It's just, you know, if that's a direction, that's...
They're, they're expensive.
Yes, they are.
Because there is new roads. Rather than just digging up the dirt, putting down plates, now you've got to lay down cunts and earth, the charcoal, sand.
Red clay.
Yeah, like with the new school that they put down in, you know, it's just millions of dollars to put in that sector.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious if there's some truth to it, because I've heard it several times in the community that the township backed up their planning board and they're only accepting 10 severances a year. If that's the only capacity to average in Nipissing, is there any truth there?
We have never exceeded 10 severances in history, including the last two years when we were at optimum. And the point is, all severances aren't, don't have to go through the planning board.
Yeah, so just, I don't know if you're aware, Tom, but there's a real nasty rumor in this community that that's the stance of the township base, and I'm very against all of that. Might want to get that over there, that's not the case. It's getting worse.
So what is the township's stance then?
Well, the point I just made, we have 10 severances a year, but there are a lot of severance. You can have a severance that doesn't have to go through the planning board.
And so then it's not limited to 10?
We have never gone above 10.
But if you did.
A creation of new lots.
That's the creation of 10 new lots. And in the last two years during COVID, that was the biggest creation of lots, the highest increase in population that we've had in the last 50 years. And we didn't even get to 10 in either of those years.
So, but is your limit 10? You're just saying how much it has been historically.
Our limit is 10, but that's not, everything doesn't have to go to the planning board.
And so does that mean if it doesn't have to go to the planning board, it can go over?
You're going to go above new 10. Yes, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you can go above 10.
We have an opposite.
We were given our own consent rates and authority by the province of Ontario, so we're no longer part of the North Atlantic Planning Board. We do our own severances, which allows us to streamline that process and bring it to our residents for lower cost and then more efficiently.
But so far, it hasn't exceeded 10, but theoretically it could, is what you're saying.
If it came to that, then it comes up.
Just a comment before I get to your question, that the most consents, when you make a planning act consent, each one is done individually on its merits. Like you don't know when you come into, cover your land, if you have landing turtle habitat or whatever might be identified through the circulation process. So I don't think, I think if I could, Mr. Mayor, I don't think you're saying that you wouldn't go past 10. It's just, it's never happened. And each one would have to be looked at individually anyway, based on the planning act process that you have to go through, your internal processes. Okay, well, I want to make a comment, but this is clear as mud. There is a cap of 10 per year.
From the ministry or from Nipissing?
From the, 10 severances through that consent process. And there is another, people can do it other ways as well, but this is, it's a cap of 10. That's what my comment is. I remember the official plan, the chism coming out, the first one, like in the 80s, and I was part of that process in the public meetings, and the focus was stopping development. And to me, and that, and we have now seen it in the plan calls for us to change that, that we should look for more affordable housing. We should develop the township. It seems that our...
It seems that our, that those those ideas are stuck in the past. Why would we have a cap of ten if our goal is to bring more people here and 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 make things more affordable? Because obviously, if we increase supply, there will be some effect on prices. Anyway, so I I'd like my input to the council to scrap the cap as far as, unless you got a good reason for it.
Well, say the message to the community, you're willing to work with me, because there isn't. I I've heard it more than once personally, that there's a belief in this community that people don't think that they can actually get a settlement. I know about the other person moving the turf.
And several successful consent applications.
I'm not denying that, I just, there's a message out there in this community that needs to change and that should be driven from council.
So that's, am I correct in saying that historically, if you, that there was a desire to maintain the rural character of uh, not in the towns, but in the rural areas, and that you could only, say you have a hundred acre lot, you could only have two severances? That used to be a lot, is that still a rule or?
That's still a rule.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that something that would need to be revisited? Because that's a double edged sword, right?
That's that's official.
I can speak to that a little bit too, from a planning perspective. Province doesn't want people living in rural areas.
Why?
Because it costs, because you have to send the ambulance out, you have to, you know, all the services that 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 come from at a provincial level. I'm just explaining why that is, so they limit the amount of severances.
And what are those services aside from the ambulance?
Police, police, snow plowing, garbage pickup, school bussing, internet.
So the more people that are in a rural area, the cheaper it becomes?
Correct, that's why they push people to the town.
So why are they pushing people not to be in rural areas when the more people find it cheaper?
Good question for the province, that's in the, that's in the provincial policy, it's not, it's not these rules, it's not their rules. But that's the reason you asked for two severances and the unorganized and et cetera. It's not.
UN two thousand.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Yeah. So getting back to this housing and we're coming full circle. So the objective stated that we ensure an adequate supply of affordable building lots to accommodate affordable housing, uh, ensure the availability of affordable and safe housing for residents, and zoning by law, they continue to review and update conferences zoning by law. So I think council has heard that there's a misconception out there about severances and maybe some communication on on that process. It's a little bit more clear. I mean, there are caps, there, um, you have to draw the line on 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 that, and you have to review each on its merits. The tricky part of the consent process is that you go through it, and sometimes it can happen for a number of reasons that are outside of everyone's control or surprise, those habitats and things that we're talking about.
What else besides habitat, you mentioned that a couple?
Natural heritage features, species that risk, um, it could be all kinds of, there could be slope issues, there's there's lots of different reasons. But that's usually a good opportunity to come in and speak and create consult with the township before you go through that process, right? Before you spend any money, or look at the mapping that they have and. So, um, yeah. Yeah.
How many building lots are being used in the township? Vacant?
Requires a county name and sort of a program campaign.
Okay. So is there any?
Yes.
In the current plan? There's, like, within the the village of Nippeson, there's still available lots?
Within the township of Nippeson?
Yeah.
There's several lots for building.
But they're usually marketed, right? And if you have money to support severance?
Now, are you asking about municipally owned building lots or private property?
Does there any municipally owned block?
Not building lots, no, those are private.
Okay, uh, let's let's move on, I'll move to the next slide, please. Okay, uh, someone asked about the natural heritage features and what exactly, I found the definition here, I want to read it straightly. About it, so township of Nippeson's official plan identifies and numbers, the number of natural heritage features on land and or water locations. They include ecological, geological, archaeological, and historical features. The significance is often related to one or more functions such as scientific research, education, and interpretation, species maintenance, conservation of unique or representative occurrences of flora, fauna, landforms, geology, historical and cultural features. Keep sense?
Yeah.
So part of the the strategic plan is to just now increase awareness and educate the public about the values and benefits of protecting and promoting natural heritage features. And this will benefit ecotourism initiatives. That last one shouldn't be dismissed, that's a very fast growing sector, ecotourism. And as the cities fill up, people want to come up here for those experiences. The Bruce Peninsula has been doing it for twenty five years or longer, fifty years. And they want to come up. And for the same reasons that you folks love living here, they want to come up and there's space, it's green, clean air. Oh, maybe not this week, but, yeah. So we, so that's what speak to when we're talking about natural heritage features and council would like to know if there's, you know, specific pockets or or things that could be protected, that could be real drop to some of the other initiatives of the strategic plan direction. Did I summarize that?
Just want to make note, very much make note, that the Black Creek on five twenty two is a protected environment. And hopefully, when we do the five twenty two, we pay the pay the shoulders. Um, what we have discussed in our area, my family, it would be nice because people want to ride their bikes. And if there was a walkout, you know, a little boardwalk out into the Black Creek, that might again attract tourism. Um, because they're, they're gonna start biking, and I don't mean a Harvey, I mean a real paddler around.
Human fellow, yeah, thank you, glad. You want else on that? Okay, historical destination, same sort of question. Uh, what makes, you know, what makes the township of Nippeson unique from a historical perspective? And this speaks to the, obviously, the museum, um, but, you know, also, um, yeah, sorry, sorry. All right. Um, so just wondering, this museum, the local history, you want to have any comments on that as part of the strategic plan direction, probably? See where, is it under the tourism section?
It's under the historical destination.
It's under what?
Historical destination.
In the trade strategic plan.
Thank you.
When we're updated.
Thanks, I was at the bottom of pages. Here's what we have, the township of Nippeson physical environment is unique on its merit when discussing south, location pristine wilderness and its abundance of water. However, it should never be forgotten the great amount of history the area holds. So obviously, the museum has the outline and statement of purpose to provide a safe repository for historical artifacts of our township and area, and to make them available for public viewing, right?
That's the, that's the statement of purpose for the township of Nippeson Museum, that's not the command of museum.
Correct.
So our our strategic plan speaks to the municipally owned museum, which is the township of Nippeson. But we also are willing to help the community and museum council in stimulating them for their operations as well as we we try to cross, we share social media posts and anything advertising to help support their events. Just wanted to clarify that the two museums.
Thank you. C two two speaks to cultural heritage by holding annual events that invite participation by residents and visitors. I don't know if that's capitalized at this point. Not yet. Direction, whether that is a desirable thing for drawing people to the area. Uh, members of community and visitors to the museum and provide educational tours of the building contents and play a role in identifying and celebrating the history of the founding families of our area to maintain a high standard of preservation of buildings grounds and collection of artifacts. Lastly, to continue to enhance the visual appeal of the facility being in Nippeson Museum. Yes, sir.
So other than the two museums, which are, you know, obvious buildings that stand out, um, because the township have a directory or a listing like of sites that fall under these definitions, like, uh, is there actually, like, am I just sticking to my area too much? Or is there things here that, you know, we could do things like the boardwalk or, you know, things like that that would help? Like, you know, the national, I can't think of what the trail is.
Transcanada.
Yeah, you know, like, I I've heard anything about that since the initial inauguration. So.
Any comments? No listing, there's no kind of, um, historical site.
But I think in, for in the, in the near future, there is, there is, I've been coming up, a collaboration of museums along Russell Road, Innisum Road. That's something that my utilities could work on, collaboration between Innisum Museum, Commanding Museum, and there's other museums down along that road. So I think that that would become a young place. And also working with the libraries in the area as well, because there there seems to be a lot of historical collaboration between libraries and museums generally.
Also, the Elsas Church, I thought it was called. St. John's, sorry.
Well, St. John's.
Um, that's quite rare, they, she usually does it twice a year. And if you want an idea about your your ancestors, that's maybe you get in touch with. And maybe it'd be nice to reach out to her and maybe she can help the township as another historical place to go. Not on a weekly basis, maybe, but, you know, be in with the museum tour.
We still have a guy in North Bay, Roy Summers, I don't know if anybody here knew Roy, but he he did this on his own, he was passionate about it. He contributed a lot to our municipal heritage community that we ended up forming because of some of the sites that he brought to our attention.
And that's, yeah, Ross is the same thing.
Yeah, or your comment, Roy is part of why I raised my hand, you know, it's it's like, like they say here, all we need volunteers or everything's volunteer driven. But as soon as the volunteers, you know, lose energy or move on or pass on unfortunately, uh, which is sad reality, but, you know, then things are lost. So, you know, and then the big thing about up here and the people that want to come up here for, as you say, the cleaner other than today, uh, is that the the area is more about the natural environment and whatnot. So, you know, identifying those natural sites and supporting them financially and making sure they stay that way. You know, we talk about bringing people up here and bringing tourism dollars, but we also want to keep things where they are to a certain degree environmentally.
It's a great comment, it's always a struggle, right? You know, you want to, you want to grow, but you you want to be careful how you do it.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
But part of it. Any other comments on that before we move on to communication? Okay. So currently, there's, newsletters are created to ensure the flow of information to the community. It's been effective in the past, but, um, sometimes, as I just pointed out, sometimes the message isn't perceived or it's misconstrued. So council recently utilized public forums, township and community center, interactive exchange. Um, our objectives are, their objectives are to continue to deliver accordingly newsletter, but also continue to use these town hall meetings as required for information input and output. So here we are in the middle of summer gathering and getting input from you folks. Any other ideas on communication, how can we improve by through the strategic plan exercise, yes, sir?
I mean, just heard that we're going to fiber optic internet here by twenty twenty five, now everybody can have started. I feel like digitization is years gone by too late, from whether it's tax bills to email emergency lists to digital newsletters to all those things that people are on computers. What's happening in the community that I feel like we just need a part of communication. While I don't think we need to abandon our old channels, I think digital channels are.
It's a great comment. We, I do, uh, to you know, a little secret sauce with the township, they just upgraded their internal system in terms of their 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 building planning software, exactly what you're talking, what it's, what the standard is in the province now. And that was a big investment, sometimes those things happen behind the scenes and, you know, maybe, I don't know if that was we did in the neighborhood or not, but that's a, that was certainly a big leap for.
We're still trying to, transitions.
Yeah.
The transition to fiber optic?
No, no, just different software that.
Different software within the biggest office for for different purposes. It was a large expense on the budget and more, yeah.
Long, long overdue. Um, so that's, that's a big one, but to your point, that stuff's not communicate, nobody knows.
I'm never aware of this. I learned a thousand dollars on it, it's tender, somewhere. At least they, like, we should be part of a strategic plan, we'll be on just the taxes.
Well, no, it it covered a lot more, but your point is what we can, it's it's, uh, it's something that they're asking, you know, your input on, is there better communication channels? I mean, this is a big thing, broadcasting and streaming, right? Meetings and all that, that's changed. That probably just came in at COVID, right?
Yes.
And a lot of municipalities have now, so that that's a way to get people involved. Get them engaged, put it online, so that's part of it. So ideas like that are welcome, there are any. Um, advertising with the completion of the four leaning of five eleven, and keep in mind, this is what we're updating here. It's few years old, travel to township from southern areas of the province has improved. The township of Nippeson offers close to forty thousand hectares of recreational land that remains for the most part on top. So objectives, publicize the township website, address on newsletters, township vehicles and signage, we've done some of that. We promote areas that are considered heritage and nature, that gets back to that one we we talked about a little bit. While while going off the stretch, you're a great start and great example. One, allow one photo to be placed with each business in the combination section of township webpage showcasing what it has to offer. On completion, the result, display collage of what township of Nippeson has to offer. That one happened?
It hasn't happened.
Okay. And that that could be just part of the communication if it's desirable.
We need the input and and I think that the the increase to the internet.
Yeah. Yeah. Advertising useful facilities that township offers in the same newsletters. And, um, and that's it, for the advertising idea. So, yes, sir.
Uh, I remember I crashed back while we tried to get in with the board of, um, on a chamber of commerce in the Amigdon.
It was it was custom inhibited at the time. I haven't done any research into the newest publication, but I know that it was well outside of a budget.
I notice every township around us, except Nippeson's, not in the last issue. Listening to directive of all the services, all the businesses, every township can accept Nippeson.
And Lawson's leaving it as well. Lawson is leaving it as well.
Due to cost?
Yes.
Do you remember the name of that publication?
Something one islands new or something, but it's a, it's a chamber of commerce for the Amigdon Islands. I know the book falls, but it's, uh, lists events all through the Amigdon Islands. And the services and the contacts are all in the municipal.
Is it printed in this or did you rent it and pick up free?
And some of the.
Establishment.
So, I haven't seen it here because. I picked it up in Shandwich.
Do you have comments?
Uh, well, I just had a comment on, uh, advertising and in relation to a natural heritage feature which, um, is a trans Canada trail. Now, I must confess that I haven't gone through every part of the township website. And I'm just wondering, is there, is there anything specific, uh, on the township website about our?
And I'm just wondering, is there, is there anything specific, uh, on the township website about our part of the Trans-Canada Trail?
I don't.
I mean, that would certainly be something that would be handy to, to have a map of our part of it.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was wondering.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Those of us.
My bad.
Those of us that are.
But the trail is really not well.
But that, again, is the Trans-Canada Trail. We don't market.
We don't market.
No.
Do we maintain it?
No, we don't maintain it either, it, part of it is. Because of our area, it's like, uh, Hazel Glen Road, Highway five sixty, or six fifty-four. That's all part of the Trans-Canada Trail. I don't want people to think it's, you know, a lovely walking trail, uh, and some of it out west, it's a four-lane highway, you know? So it's on the website, um, and if you go to the museum, the trail is on the map in front of the museum as well.
It's pretty rough out this way, like you're moving up from Elsass Church and.
Got a couple of young lads that took the trail, they were at the museum looking for food, water. They got in a little deeper than they thought.
We're hunting up in close to the. This whole e-car comes up there and it's all in the GPS, says I can go through here, like over to standard type of. It's kind of, oh, yeah, just gotta go right at it.
Or have to take the run at it, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, that kinda, you know what, that's a good segue into the next, next slide, so let's probably jump ahead to that one because it's.
Can I just say a comment?
Yeah.
Uh, for the advertising?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I think you might, and he said Chamber of Commerce, but what about? The, uh, information center down in Amstel, I think that's where they're located. Can we not put something in there to say, hey, we're Nipissing Township, and this is what we have got, or just a little?
Poster.
A poster, something, a little poster, and maybe in North Bay, uh.
It's where Perry Township, I know.
Yeah.
Showers.
There's one in all the museums.
Pardon me?
We advertise in all the museums all the way up the road.
Yes.
And in North Bay Museum.
But if I'm driving a car, not in a museum, I want to, uh, going to the information center to find out where to go fishing in Nipissing, for example.
Well, if then you go to Ontario Fishing and go online, it'll give you fifty different places.
I'm supposed to do that, but I'm in my car, and I'm in the information center, and I'm named posted in Nipissing, maybe I wanna pick up, uh, something.
I don't know how many people stop in Kearney or in Amstel to find out about Nipissing, you know? But it's also posted in Berry at the fishing center there, like Nipissing and everything is at the one in Berry on Yonge Route. So that is one place.
I'm talking the information.
The copper roof one.
Yeah, the copper roof one, yeah. Maybe I'm not sure if everyone's aware of where it is, but.
Oh, yeah. Perfectly little play, just for my life.
I'm just, I'm just saying that you wanna recognize better, put a poster or something, maybe.
Good comment, thank you.
We can ask, for sure.
Okay, uh, recreation and tourism, it kinda, it kinda does fills a proper honest conversation. Um, sustainable community facilities, what does that mean? I think, I'm not sure if everyone's aware of it, communities have a past asset management plan. Right, how are you going to maintain and repair and replace over time different assets, so? Um, I'm not gonna pretend to know too much about the, the existing community facilities, but there's certainly, uh, town center, the community centers. What else do we?
We have the, the township of Nipissing Community Center, we have the, it's centered, we have new playgrounds that they're, that heritage park. Give me a totally. You're not mentioning this.
No.
You don't have to all mention it. But I was, and it was asked about municipal service, so I was explaining municipal. It doesn't say municipal, like, it just says. That's just what I was saying, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, just what she just.
Just the start.
So, so the recreation and tourism talks about, you know, these community facilities and what is needed, what? What direction do, would you like to the township of Nipissing move in, in terms of those facilities, what, what, um? Where should resources be allocated, things like that, that's part of your strategic plan exercise, right? Preparing for. Um. And then the second one being the fitness health promotion, in the last version. Of eating and active living can help create a healthier community, regular physical activity is essential for healthy wellbeing. People eating nutritious foods and are physically active are likely to live longer, healthier lives. Not, not, uh, groundbreaking there, but on the heels of discussion about bikers and trail walkers and some of these things, and some of the things that make this area naturally. Attractive, right? And that, and that is, um. Certainly a very growing part of the community, of the economy, ecotourism and, and. Uh, fitness activities related to that, right? So the township of Nipissing owns and operates, non-supervised, well-established fitness center at two three eight one, Highway sixteen. Anything else I need to add about that? Yes, sir.
One thing, like, the community center here, this volunteer run, it's completely run by volunteers, and. We would be more happy to ever enter the meeting with the township to provide more fitness. Here, but we just don't have the funds or the volunteers, but we would rather make the facilities available to add to more fitness programs.
What about seniors fitness?
You mean all of us?
We're all seniors here.
I know, I know Eastone runs different, uh, fitness programs and looks for communities that, you know, want them and, uh. You know.
Yeah, we're also looking, trying to provide more, uh, recreation for seniors, uh, and all the residents of this area next year. Is, uh, we haven't been able to get it, it's a lack of volunteers, but we wanna get a lot of more programs going here next fall.
And I think.
We might be coming for money.
Yeah, when it comes down to volunteerism, though, that's an issue. You know, we just talked about our soccer program last week. We had an issue with, things came up and we were short volunteers there, and, uh. And like you say, Tom, we're finding the volunteers are, I mean, majority of them are over sixty years of age. And, and young people don't seem to have any time.
I know I've personally volunteered in my application to the fire. Group alone, it's been, I don't know if that for almost two years, so I've, and I know that I've got a neighbor that's in the same boat. Maybe not two years, but, you know, we're, we're not addressing people who actually wanna volunteer.
Give us your name, your code.
Yeah.
Come here.
Yeah, well, like, they, they, I, I know personally, like, that's just one story, so. Like, building a test that he's asked me a couple of times publicly, and I'm still interested, but it has as far as goes. So that, you know, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth, I wanna continue to volunteer.
I don't know about that, the. Fire department wants to keep that, but your point is, is exactly right, in almost every community, on territory, nineteen communities. Volunteers are aging, no one's stepping up to replace them, and, um, as a, as a result, programs are falling out. And, uh, so, you know, that, that might be a specific instance, and I, I volunteered, and I'm sure lots of. And we've come some time, but lots of younger people do, but it's not enough, so maybe that's part of the strategic plan, how do you get the community more engaged? How do you get those volunteers, how do you bring them in, like, what kind of programming, that's, that's what this part of the strategic plan is asking about, yes?
Why not advertise at the, uh, high school that we volunteer on?
We do.
We do. Do you?
Yeah.
Out of the high school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you get a?
That's a big one for a lot of kids in smaller communities, just trying to find somewhere to volunteer to get into the hour.
The, the hard thing is, is they know they need the hours, it's just the transportation.
Yeah.
And at school, they can be bused, but out here, if you say, you know, you can come to the community center and then it's, well, are you gonna come and drive me? Well, if I gotta drive a half an hour to pick you up, and a half an hour back, I might as well just go for an extra hour, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, but you're right, but we do it at Omegon, and I know. We've talked to people at Scholar and also at West Ferris, so we look for volunteers for sure.
Also, where you capture, right, if you're on the rec committee or you're on the union board, it's, oh, we bought this list, these people did it last year, they'll just do it again, call it a not. There's a place for a more wider end distribution of communications in different banners, but also a way to. Capture and share volunteer lists across the township that are, like, and we hate a database on this, that those people are always in our contact when we want. There, as opposed to, oh, I've done, like, this, this person will do that, and then those people age over. That happens in the next generations.
I ask that, we talked a lot about it, especially on the rec committee, about how do we celebrate our volunteers, and, and, and part of it is how do we celebrate those volunteers? So they have that desire to, to give another ten, twenty, whatever, a hundred percent, right, so. And we looked at is that, are we doing enough for that? And how do we celebrate them, so we're looking at different ways. To do that, and, and we're, we've had a lot of luck through Omegon and through the different high schools where one, um. One student will come volunteer and they'll bring a couple with them, maybe other friends and work with them, that able to try and do whatever we can with the rest of them. I, I will be honest, and parents have been phenomenal. And parents have stood up all the time, and we get some really good parents out there that are willing to help, but are not willing to commit. It's the commit part, right, we say we go soccer for six weeks, they don't wanna commit to saying, I will be there for six weeks. But if you're in trouble, I'll help.
Fair enough. Do the main incentives, say it.
Yeah, we do, and that's what we're, we're working on, how do we think at a level?
Two weeks from now, that's the end of soccer, and those of us that have coached and rapped through the entire. We're gonna get a hot dog, a freezy, and a drinking box.
That's exactly what they want.
Cause that's what they want, and that's what we're doing, you know?
Yeah.
Make sure that the big jump hole has them, so.
Just wanna be good, be good.
But there was also a kind of, uh, township for, um, adult volunteers. Uh, which I was, on two volunteer committees, there was actually a banquet for us.
Yeah.
And, um, that, that is kind of.
We still do that, but we couldn't do it during COVID.
Yeah.
So any of the bond, during COVID, not allowed.
Yeah.
So everybody got a gift basket, and personally delivered by councillor Kirkby or myself.
Oh, wow.
So all the volunteers got a gift basket, and, and it was all made up of things from local businesses and whatever, and. Because that's all we could do, because we couldn't get to more.
And we'll put that in the newsletters of the more. Communication.
I, I know a great hallway.
Okay.
Before you move away from capitalism here, without a plan. Tourism in this community is increasing, it will. More and more people coming here, there's more and more short-term rentals, whether you like it or not. The, I, I just wanna go, we're actually, like, I, I know that I've been advised that we're watching other communities and we're gonna look at what they do. But I don't believe we're in a position to hurry up and wait. Has everybody actually done the risk assessment and looked at the impacts that this is having on small days? There's been gold coming in out of these like things from different waterways all the time, there's nowhere this community can washable to go with the next thing, which is now a law because of the basic. Think we're at a serious risk. Property owners like myself, from severances over granted decades before I was even conceived, are dealing with the damages to the roads from short-term rentals from people going up and down. Have you looked at the entire impact? And are we seriously considering what it's doing to this whole community?
Well, we can jump ahead to that, or we can come back to it, um.
Uh, uh, so, I didn't.
Oh, that's okay. It's okay, it's okay, we can, uh, I don't know where it falls under our agenda, but, or maybe we are.
We are, but we're, we're, we're working, it's a very large project, and we are.
It's, I, I want some more feedback that we're working, like, what are we actually doing?
We're feeding barbeque to the lakes, beer bottles, cans floating by, and I'm yelling off my desk on a Wednesday at eleven o'clock, please be quiet. And they're just yelling back that we don't have a noise bylaw, and my kids are being counted, and we're up all night because. And, like, they're literally two doors down screaming at me and Maureen, and they know that there's no noise bylaw, and they don't care, and they're pushing bats and. Me or whatever, they don't give a shit about any of that, right? And they're just breaking and having fires, they're, they're breaking every law that we buy.
We're picking alcohol, and alcohol offenders up on the Elsass boundary daily. Because the, it, this is turned into a resort community that's not being governed.
What lake are you on?
Root.
Root, Root, Root Lake, Sagetasty, right, you know, so Sagetasty Lake, that's a ministry of environment, that's the, right? Involved and knows that, um.
So I, I.
The short-term rental housing bylaw. Is a problem for every municipality in the province. Every municipality.
I'm speaking to this municipality in front of me, and I'm directly asking them, what are we actually doing? What, what are we actually doing? You say we're working with other communities, has there been meetings held, is there anything drafted, what's actually taking place?
So what we're going to do for questions that come to us this evening?
Yeah.
Is we're going to draft answers and put that in a public health committee on our website with our council package. So everyone gets the answer, I wanna make sure that you get all of the information included, I can't just answer from here right now.
I, I've asked for this information already, you should be able to answer here right now.
I'm not going to answer specifics right now.
Fair enough.
I hear that.
The, yes, sir, missed you.
I just wanted to make a point, but, uh, the plan talks about economic development, and I've been part of plans in Nipissing for twenty years. And I remember talking about how there was going to be more, not me talking, but the, the meeting talking about. How would the four-lane open, but we're gonna get a lot more people, and we had a plan for it. Well, we're here, the four-lane open, we have apps, we have short-term rentals, we have, we have things, it's changing, we have to do something about it. I, I really sympathize with anybody who has to hear that all night, carousing by people, you know, keep cottages down. I hear it, but it's not short-term rentals, uh, my neighbors lend their cottages to their adult kids in their twenties. And there's nothing worse than having ten, twenty-year-olds at two doors down, cause they're not going to bed at midnight, and so I understand.
Lucky for you, you can speak to your neighbor about it. My neighbor doesn't.
No, no, I can't speak to my, I, I've tried this. You're going somewhere you don't wanna go. He said, phone the cops, it's my kids, they can do it, never mind. Anyway, the point is, when you have economic development, whether it's in Toronto or North Bay or here, when you get more people, there are some problems, and. The gentleman's right, we have to manage them, but we also have to remember when these, that these people are. The tip of the, you know, five percent of what's going on, I have no idea how many short-term rentals there are in Nipissing on any given day. But there's dozens, if not hundreds, this township was founded on short-term rentals, that's why the Nipissing Road was built here, and why. People came fishing back a hundred years ago and fished out the lake, it was to the economic development, now you can't catch, you know, a reasonable amount of walleye. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's coming hand in hand, and you can't stop it, but managing it properly, but again, the noise issue is not about short-term rentals. The noise issue is about people having parties where they shouldn't have, and, and that's much bigger than short-term rental.
Good feedback.
Hey, if there is a noise bylaw, township has, and they call the police, and the police, then they have to act, or not?
No, then you'd have to police municipally. We'd have to have the bylaw enforcement officer go there instead.
So, so if there's a party beside somebody's place. A fourth parking corner, and they call the police, and we have a noise bylaw, they can't come and react to that.
According to, according to the OPP, according to the OPP. They have to respond anywhere from eleven PM till seven AM.
Irregardless of whether or not there's a noise bylaw.
Right.
Thank you.
That's done with this, Patrick, that's a really. That's done with this Patrick, that's a good one.
I I am, I am so sorry because we pay over three hundred thousand dollars a year for policing and that is part of the contract with policing.
So should people like this, should people like this let you know so that you can do something?
I mean, I think we've told them that. OPP, they they are well aware that that is their job, you know? But they're gonna say, sorry, we're over, we're in, we're in Madawak, we're whatever, you know, they'll come up with some understaffed. They have a bigger budget, they'll have more police officers available, things like that. But I mean, that's their job and we're paying for it. I mean, I don't know what you do.
Sounds like we need some deputy bylaw officers.
If you are, and we certainly, there are lots of people, I'm sure that would go for that. We just have to hire more people and.
Pay for it, pay for it.
You have to pay for it, though. You know, we can have our own police force. North Bay has our own police force. You know?
I wonder if they're having a fire, you call like, call an emergency or call the police or correct, they're having a fire.
What, fire?
Breaking the, breaking the.
If it's an emergency, call nine one one. If it's not an emergency, call a fire number.
If they're in fires.
It's been, it's been advertised.
The township office. I I actually just phoned over and tell them that the fire was on fire regularly and they tend to believe me if we require it. So that's been working late of late, but.
Yeah, just tell them by your own number. Okay, let's get the, let's bring her back. Someone had a comment over here.
Well, just the OPP situation, the North Bay detachment, they cover an area the size of FBI. The seven offices on the Friday day.
Yeah.
Right, so good luck getting someone to come to a noise complaint.
Even in the, even in the city in our day with your municipal resource, the noise complaint can take, you know, hours for some, I'm sure. I I just want to say that I have encountered the fire department coming to check for a fire. I didn't have a fire, but neighbors did. So I know that they will come to the property and and threaten to ticket the people. Okay. I think we can move on from this, this uh particular slide. We're almost through. We are through questions, comments. We're gonna move into some weight about the waste management, but let's jump to the uh the next steps. I think we, thanks for that participation, everybody. That was respectful and there was a good input there. And uh the next step, as as Chris or the mayor spoke at the beginning, the comments and suggestions are going to be included as part of the the research and consideration for inclusion in the strategic plan. And there's gonna be a draft document presented to council in the fall and I'm assuming after, would the draft be online or?
Let's be, get to that point.
Yeah. Council will approve the strategic plan once they're satisfied that it provides a broad vision for the future of the township. So this meeting, next, next week's meeting, but certainly anybody who wants to uh communicate is encouraged to do so. On the next slide, it's got the contact stuff.
It's on the last slide.
Last one, okay, we'll get to that after. But we're gonna switch gears here a little bit and talk a little bit about the landfill management um and the the changes required toward to to sustain the operation of that. I don't know who wants to take the lead on this and do the background. Mayor, I guess you are.
So we've had some updates with the new consultants on our landfills to give us an update on the remaining lifespan. And the the information that was provided to us has presented some new challenges. So Bear Creek landfill update is now the estimated remaining lifespan is four years. The estimated closure costs of that will be eight hundred fifty one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars just to close it and to continue to monitor it for the twenty-five years. But that doesn't include a new landfill or any other changes. And so we're working with consultants to investigate expansion of that fill area at the Bear Creek landfill. That is still a few years ahead. It's time. So the Wolf Lake landfill. Wolf Lake landfill estimated lifespan is seventeen and a half years. Once the Bear Creek landfill closes, this will actually speed up. Will be our takeaway years for Wolf Lake landfill site because that's the only site we'll have left to use. So the estimated post-closure costs at this point for the seventeen and a half years left is four hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and fifty. And again, that's just for closure costs and for me, it's over the twenty-five years that we have to watch over those landfill sites. That doesn't include what we would have to look at if we needed a new landfill site. So these are the challenges we're facing. So.
What you mean by if? What you mean by if we need a new landfill?
Are you suggesting that there's? But if we can continue to expand these landfills and do more waste diversion and find ways to lengthen the lifespan of these landfills, we can put that off for a longer time.
And has that been looked at?
That's what we're looking at now. These these new numbers have significantly shortened the lifespan of our landfills as what under what we were operating on. So that's why these challenges.
And it's because the criteria have changed or is it because people are adopting way more stuff? Why has it changed?
Short-term rentals and the usage. It's gotta be considered. The volume of garbage going into this community decreases every week. So producing, the production is there.
I think we had an excellent comment about some some containers and things that we're gonna look into as far enough, but I think with the focus of this is is that are there strategies or there are other things? And certainly I don't disagree, that's probably a big part of it for sure, but um here, there's some other considerations. You do bag limits, you do, right? As Chris mentioned, is there other strategies for dealing with this? So two hands really quickly. Yeah, you, I saw your first story.
Um, on the previous slides where you said the the dollar values, um, I didn't know if you were gonna cover it later, but I was just more curious why one was more than the other.
One is bigger than the other.
Based on the size?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the other thing we wanted to point out is probably if you want to apply for a new landfill, first of all, provincial government has suggested that there will be no new landfills. So there's a problem right there, but not only on top of that is to go through all the environmental studies, it takes a minimum of seven years. We've got four years. So.
Yeah.
We, what we're going to look at is applying to stay on the footprint, just to enlarge the footprint where we are. And we have people, a company that's looking at that as we speak, and that can be arranged within two years. If we stay at the size we are, as in not doubling it, staying at the same size, if we have two years to look at it, and if that's the case, then we can again hopefully get back to seventeen years at Bear Creek. And then after we look at Bear Creek, then we will look at Wolf Lake and see if we can, again, but you have to stay within. But soon as we start that, that's gonna look at other issues because now you can't have severances because now the dump's gonna be twice as big. So your five hundred feet, five hundred meters is now thousand meters. So we we are looking at it and this all came up within the last year. Yes.
I just want to comment that there's an enormous difference between one family's garbage and the next. Like in our family, once a month, we have, there's two of us, we have this much garbage. I'm not kidding. And most of it is clean plastic that our province is not deemed to find a way to recycle. So there's a lot of people who have a lot of garbage. So I think the bag limits and other controls like that are critical. Critical if we're all these parties and people that come, don't let them bring it. How many days can you be in here too? Oh, you're allowed one cup of garbage.
You can make it too restrictive and those garbage gonna end up.
Yeah, that's that's a fine line.
Side of the road. So I was just wondering with the 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 changes that are going to come. Um, a while back when we first started recycling in this township, I was on the uh ill-conceived well, ill-named dump committee, which I think one of the first things I suggested was change it to landfill instead of dump. Um, but is the township considering a a reincarnation of a a a volunteer or committee to, you know, put in, put in ideas?
Like firing up a new book committee or something.
Yeah, well, that's another one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The city, the city does have a waste resources liaison committee and there's one, one staff or or ex officio and they have volunteers and it's community people who have a little bit of knowledge.
Combacker must I do more of the lifespan? Hard to come back there. Did they start to extend the life more?
Yeah, we just don't have those figures yet. But yes, that was one that was purchased at one place.
We purchased it.
Who estimated the costs to close out these dumps? What's the company that estimated that?
Injun.
Who?
Injun, they're our new consultants for the landfill maintenance.
And where did they start?
There's an office, I believe, in Macan and Sutton.
My next question. David knows this. What's the area of the dump? How much land is at the dump and at the bylaw? Acres?
I believe thirty-five acres.
And they're telling us we can only use that dump for seventeen years, that's thirty-five acres?
Well, we have more property, but you have to stay within footprint. They give you a footprint. You can't just keep moving your garbage out.
But those footprints are a lot of changed when.
Yeah, that's what the mayor's.
It's what we're working on right now, especially at Wolf Lake. Well, over time, to take it to the max what we would be allowed at Wolf Lake. And we own a lot of property at Wolf Lake. That will take probably seven years to go through. We probably have a pretty good chance of getting it and then we give us a big volume. By then, Bear Creek, we're about forty thousand cubic meters. And I'm not sure what we're at right now, but we're gonna try and double that or go back to another thirty-eight thousand. That way we don't need that environmental assessment. So if we go over that, then we trigger an assessment that could cost you a million dollars.
If I'm not mistaken, shutting down the landfill is problematic as well because you have to monitor and figure that out.
Yeah, correct.
Twenty-five years.
Yes, at this age, that's rare. Yes, ma'am.
Could I um ask if it's feasible to do a a an educate, like these numbers are enormous. And so an education campaign where people are taught how to have almost no garbage. And it won't affect the people that are bothering you guys. But the whole township as a whole has way too much fun. So there must be a way the township could initiate something that would cost really a tiny fraction of money compared to what's involved with if you don't do it. This was a.
Scare tactic on how much a new landfill costs and what it costs to all the citizens.
Yeah, I I think one of the, one of the things that was mentioned, I think it was our late mayor, Pat Hoff, mentioned to me that every every fifty thousand dollars that the township has to spend increases the tax bill by something like one percent. So.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Closer.
Yeah.
Close.
Yeah. So um you know, these, these kinds of initiatives um need to, need to be uh I guess financially responsible and financially sustainable as well because as everybody knows, tax is a dirty word these days. Um, it's essential for services, but nobody wants to pay them. So we have to be careful on how we roll out.
I had a question, but this gentleman actually made my point or opened that up. Because I was gonna ask, it goes to two big numbers, eight hundred fifty thousand and five hundred thousand, one point three million. And of course, that doesn't include actually opening a dump, which maybe is another million. So if if this, I'm, because that spread over twenty-five, advertised over twenty-five years. So if it's a hundred thousand dollars increase in dump, sorry, landfill costs, um, is that what we're looking at, like a ten percent increase in uh our tax bill? Were you talking about the whole tax bill initiative? When you said thirty thousand dollars, Tom? Uh, thirty thousand equals one percent?
Close to that.
Yeah, so.
But.
Over the years, we've been placing money into reserve for the closure on the landfill. So we have over, we have quite a bit, actually.
Thank you. Somebody had a good idea.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
The only problem is that we thought we had more years.
Correct.
And this new group has said, no, we thought we had seventeen, seventeen and seventy. And then it comes back that we have four and seventeen.
So fire them.
Yeah, I agree with that, we did.
Question, is that a comment?
I was like, can we, have we, what about like other things? So if we look at other things, like I feel like one consultant said one thing, this consultant, how confident are we in the new numbers given that huge variance in their opinion?
I have no dog in this class, but that is very reputable engineering firm.
Oh, I'm a work, yeah, not like, I just, I feel like the person before was a rock wolf too. We hired someone unrecognizable. Is there a second opinion in there that it's?
It wasn't discussed for this budget, but it was supposed to be a cost. And then they would have to have a few years of benchmarking, so there's several costs involved.
Or even a comparative uh analysis.
This gentleman's been waiting for a long time. Go ahead.
The usage over there, we seriously need to consider paid for usage. People are coming in with bin bags of garbage. They're overproducing garbage, they're not recycling. We're paying people to pick stuff up as a landfill pile. If you take them two dollars and fifty cents for every bag they bring in there, they're gonna bring less bags of garbage, they're gonna put it where they're recycling.
You probably know where you could see that from where you're sitting, but it's considered bag limits, utilize a landfill carrot system that tracks the number of bags and work with commercial property and tourist camps to best support the waste limits approach.
So if we look at neighborhood communities, I grew up in Southern Ontario, I've seen this town this time, it's been landfill life increased exponentially as soon as they started charging with the property.
Thank you. Yes, somebody had a.
I was just gonna commend the council and previous councils for the uh signage that they put up at the landfill uh encouraging people to sort uh and educating people to sort at the same time. Um, I know that uh North Bay, or I believe North Bay, I'm not a hundred percent sure if they did uh something with the compost for the community gardens, uh but there's options like that. Um, it might divert from the landfill aspect, you know, from the personal household. Um, a lot of people out here are already composting for their own safety, but just to add to what Renee said about educating the community and 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 sorting, but again, you know, the the township has the signage, the information's there. Uh, so, you know, just need some believer, please, and I think that's what the staffs will.
Yeah, for me, definitely have to have bag limits, you know? Because you're right, you know, we can go with one bag in two weeks where somebody else has ten bags, you know? So there has to be limits, there has to be restrictions. And we're asking, I mean, that's what we're looking at. And that's why we're here tonight to get direction from you. You've got a clear message back there. We need bag limits and we need to charge people that are abusing it. So these are the things, that's why Steve's here and and the rest of us are listening and writing down things because this has to happen, things have to change.
It'll make people recycle more because when you take a look at those bags, somebody will bring ten and there's log cans and plastic where he's gonna start paying for that. You might go down for one or two a week.
And this woman had a great comment about about educating uh because sometimes when you put it in financial terms, what's this mean to your tax dollars, right? And maybe that's a way to approach it.
That's a good one, yeah.
You know, uh you had your comment.
Yeah, I was always wondering why the compost being at the dump because where, like where we live, if you compost outside, you're not there to see. Well, the bears are already at the dump, so if there was a compost. Like the area and it's actually, I don't know, and we put, I'm sure many people would keep the compost, bring it, you know, when they're graduated or whatever, and then dump it in the thing because you can't find your yard and then your dogs are gonna, there's bears, there's cattle. So that is a problem, find compost, not very well.
And they have one up at Colette, and so what can we have?
Right.
Good comment, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
That's what, that's what Carol was saying about having, uh, recycling down in, well, that's not where it is. But do it that way in this part of the area where you might not have people dumping in the lake, you know?
We talked about this previously over there. Last fall, not the season, the two weeks in November. They didn't know if I pushed it last time, there are two entrances here. I can't take them to our dump because they're not a clear plastic bags. I, I, I take cable those entrances off because they were more tires than in them. Last fall, they just come and they just pull an entrance and just pass it to the cable, they send the bags.
Yeah.
Now, what am I supposed to do? Because you want the prices and everything, you're always going to go to the dumps either.
So it's the answer.
I think it's a small minority of people who do that, very small minority.
No, it, what it is, is once coming up here hot, they just, they got no place to, they bring cameras.
I think a lot has to do with.
They got no place to take it. So they just sold my try.
It's on your limits, what you put on your limit? You put a crazy limit, like a one bag every two weeks or something, we're gonna get beat, thrown out, that, when we go through that one, and then when they started locking the dump. I took three mattresses to the dump.
Seventy bags.
Between my place and Ruth Aiden Drive.
Seventy bags a year or something along that line. I think everybody could live with that, and if you're over seventy, you pay to play, but.
Like every bag or forty gallons?
That's those big clear plus bags. But if you had whatever number it's up, but it's maybe seventy, I mean, you can't get away with seventy bags a year, then.
You bought race match furniture.
Yeah, but, so that's for a whole household, which may be one person or maybe eight.
Yeah.
There has to be.
That's a little bit of a.
Yeah.
You kind of, I think you have to kind of draw an average because you got the young family with the three kids and more kids. And then you got the seniors that.
Don't be pointing at me.
No, I'm pointing at me too.
My birthday's Saturday, take me.
I really do appreciate what we're all talking about here, but I wanna go back and comment the made of Southern Ontario. They're going by a paper bag model and it's working. Like they're, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. If you take four bags this week, you're paying eight bucks for the bags. If you take one bag next week, you're paying two bucks for it.
Also, they charge for each of the bags.
They charge for every bag, every bag that comes in the gate.
Do you buy more tags?
Yes.
Our base is down at First and Ouse.
Yeah, it isn't working, they're gonna, and the research needs to be done to see how that's actually worked.
The Central County, they traded some of that and, uh, we had the farm down there and we got lots of bags. For our, as soon as they brought in, uh, paying so much for extra bag.
You have, you have, I think you have to try and approach it, a multi-front approach, education, bags, fees. Some of that.
Well, what's your feedback of someone charged by the bag? Reasoning what he's saying about that people dumping.
You always gonna have bad players, we have them now. And they, they, the, the people who are, they, you, you look at North Bay, you look at what Rod's saying about mattresses. The people who are dumping those mattresses are people who can't afford to take them to the dump anymore. It's, it's like, or, or they're just bad players. Where you're never gonna get away from that. It's gonna increase a little bit, but it's not gonna increase to the point where these cycles are all littered and garbage. If that was the case, people wouldn't be riding to the dump, what's that?
Yes, ma'am.
All, all I have a bike to say, we recycle our cans. And we give the cans to the Lions Club, the Truck and Lions Club, collect some. We don't have to smash them down, nothing. They collect them and they do whatever they do with that money. That's my house.
Taking account of.
Compost for the wheelchairs.
Yes.
And the cans, they crush them, and when the prices go up, they take the cans to the rooms.
So why can't we educate our township? To send it to the Lions Club? That might be just one area. Or as, as this lady is saying, let's, let's, let's have an education campaign where we might have a town hall again, three times a year, and not just adults, kids as well. You know, they can't, they, they can't take paper to school for their lunches, it has to be in those containers, like they, and bring everything home. So let's start doing something like that. Let's be the, let's be the forefront here and show them that we can recycle and educate the public out there.
Just, could I ask, what patient, um, do you think, uh, cans, the things that are going to the Lions Club, is that alcohol, uh, containers or?
No, ginger ale pop cans.
Okay, because there's no deposit at this point on ginger ale pop cans, so they'd be recycling it for you. And, but at least they're benefiting by getting the tax, which is, we take, we take the tax off too and.
Why you doing a whole, it's a form of beer cans, it's.
Yeah, they'll, they'll sort those and bring them back to you.
I don't know what to do with the trash.
They get crushed and then you get a third time.
Yeah, and, yeah, yeah, no, okay, so they're doing it via aluminum, which is great. But then, and our landfill, just in case people aren't aware, will take your alcohol empties back and then deposit and take those to the beer store to be recycled and sorted, and then that money goes back to the community.
Well, I didn't know about the cost with the landfill and thank you for that, that was worth coming to the meeting just to, because I didn't know it was as bleak as it is. But I do wanna make, uh, so the comment was made about composting. Just by coincidence, the boss told me a few weeks ago that we were gonna start composting. So I can tell you that there are containers that apparently, because we are getting bugged, bugged by, uh, animals in our gardens. But I, on Amazon, I bought a Canadian-made container that basically spins on a, on an axle and I, you know, I mean, if a bear wanted that enough, I imagine they could get in. But it basically is vermin-proof and it's off the ground. And you spin it like, I'm really impressed with it, we're full into composting, so we're diverting more stuff than we did a month ago. And I'd like to suggest maybe there should be a push for that, because, you know, this person over here didn't realize that there might be an option that you can get away with, uh, you know, peeing raccoon and, and bear proof.
Maybe sell them on Amazon, if you buy them back.
Well, it, it might be worth giving them away, but, but with, with those costs, I didn't know.
I just noticed, one of you mentioned earlier that people come with multiple bags and when you look that there's a lot of recycling in them. And is there no way to reject, like, can't, there's an education opportunity right there, like, what happens?
People are very sneaky.
Very what?
Sneaky, getting tight stuff real well, so.
It'd be almost just as easy for them to do it right.
That's right.
Yeah, if they would divert it, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But you know, you know, I work at the beer store and, uh, you know, like I had a guy bring in a truckload of empties and he proffered it off of that and got a free case of beer. Well, after he left, uh, we noticed, uh, you know, something strange kind of holding out of the one. And so we had to open them all up. Every single bag had contraband and it hidden in the center, surrounded by beer cans.
Oh, it's contraband.
And we're talking thousands and cans of beer.
Yeah.
Well, nerf baseball bat, uh, you know, everything, you know, like, they talk about the campers, the people coming up, the ones we want to bring in, uh, their money to our community. But then they're looking for somewhere to put their waste. Well, you know, I go and open up the store and there's two bags of trash mixed with alcohol containers in front of my store. You know, so, you know, maybe having those containers available to people that are bear proof or things that you see at the, you know, provincially uh, regulated parks and things like that, I don't know if we import them. You know, a lot of these people are, you know, coming up to properties that have been owned generally, generationally and, you know, they just haul their trash away and leave it somewhere as they leave, and serve again. So I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, people, you know, there's that and everything.
While Rob was talking about mattresses, I'll guarantee you that half the mattresses that they come to our landfill aren't from our township, probably are from Southern Ontario. You know, we must get three hundred a year. So a mattress is about a thousand dollars on average for a decent mattress. Times that by three hundred, and that's not from any same township, it's impossible.
And that couldn't be from the hundreds and the camps and things, or like, people are, you're suggesting that people are spending the gas money to drive up.
Well, they're coming up anyway, throw a couple mattresses in and then, like on their way, yeah.
How would they get them in without a legal permit?
Well, they're not, like, it's cheaper to bring them up here, it used to be, now you've got it paid to play, so.
So are we seeing a reduction in how many mattresses are going in for legal, or is it the same number?
The same number, we've, we've increased the cost to twenty-five dollars per, and we've also started with the diversion program. So we have a company that comes and takes the mattresses out, so it isn't from our landfill building. It's constantly what we have to do.
So people are bringing them in with a legal permit there or they're not?
Yes.
Bring it in, yeah.
Yeah.
So what they're finding is, is they're bringing the mattresses to the cottage, bringing the cottage one to the landfill.
Oh, yeah.
So buy the new ones for the primary residents, bring the one from the primary residents to the cottage, the cottage one to the landfill.
That's the law.
No, it's buy and trot, don't leave it and trot.
That's right.
Okay. But we have a solution, we're charging people and then we have them removed, so kudos to you.
One last one about the commercial properties and tourist camps to best support the waste limit approach you brought up. You know, just while everybody was talking about all this, and you're talking about two different things, right? For people who live here. And the people who visit here, but then you also have larger sites, whether that's Trailer Park or, how do you deal with, with the volume coming out of there, obviously? Bag limit working there and how do you, how do you do that, right? Multiple sites, things like that.
Wasn't there a previous councillor who owned a trailer park?
Oh.
Sorry, I should have.
Tourist camp.
Oh, tourist camp?
Yeah, not a camp.
Yeah, yeah, how, how, do you guys know from conversations with her when this topic, because this topic would have been coming up every single time over the years? What, what she did at her company, her business?
They recycle, they did everything like that, yeah. And that's why we have to look at this, if we say it's, they're still, I mean, we, it's not commercial, it's still an individual.
Right.
That owns it. So if we limit it to eighty bags, when they have twelve cottages, they're gonna have twelve bags just from those twelve cottages. So their eighty bag limit will be gone really quickly. And then we charge them. Because as soon as we do, you're gonna say, we're against economic development. We're against business, because we're charging them, you know?
Well, they, they.
We already heard that.
They cover that cost in their business, that's.
Right, exactly. And that's what they're gonna have to do if we go through with this. It's part of doing business, you have a trailer park, whatever, you're gonna have to pay.
And, and we're, we're talking, we wanna bring that kind of thing in, so we need to make sure that they understand that when they register their business.
So, or contact, which is.
So a business saying like, social general store, isn't paying a premium for dump waste to play for, is that?
No.
So they, a business like that pays less property taxes than me, and they're not paying a premium for dump waste play?
I don't know if they pay less property taxes.
Oh, I do. The property is listed as public knowledge. Maybe we should start there.
Well, that's, that's, you know, they're getting back to the bag limit and your bags and all that, that's, that's the conversation.
Well, there's a lot of environmental incentives for new businesses as well, so a lot of that stuff is just, you know, what community and what does the community do and then, you know, tie that into it. You know, as far as the economic growth and for you people and stuff, so, but we're not wrong.
We have about fifteen minutes left, you know, surprising, we're gonna make it eight o'clock here, I think, the sunset.
I have a question, I have a way to public, I've never done it.
Maybe we skip over it.
No, this one, uh, whatever. But I'm just wondering if there's a rule about how often waterfront property is not the common receptive? And if there is, are you willing to bring it to like, maybe put it on your, um, mail in your Facebook? And if the water is, you can report it or make it, you know, because I have learned, I believe, that people don't know that they are supposed to encounter waterfront receptive, and I've never done it.
Oh, yeah.
And we do ours every year, I, when I was on, I'm not saying it was, it was maximum every two years, you did it every year there. And we do it every year now, but many of other people are not doing it at all. For years and years and years. But I feel like we should bring some.
It falls under the conservation authority, but it falls under the legislative health and the education people when they buy the property too.
It's like people, I thought we didn't even know that that was a thing.
Well, that could be.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So I'm not supposed to give ideas, but one of the things that we did years ago in economic development was we put together a newcomer package, like a welcome wagon like you used to do.
Yeah.
Here's where the landfill is, here's the hours of operation, here's divert this as much as possible. You should bump out your set decks, here's the service companies that are available to service this area, all that sort of thing. Um, that was very effective in, in, uh, in economic development. We, we specifically designed it at the time for, um. We had a lot of multinational people in, so we had it in different languages, right? And things like that to train, uh, it was mostly online, we didn't spend a lot too expensive, but we sent them a letter with the website link. And here's everything you need to know about, welcome, welcome to the township, here's what you need to know.
Could, could there be a similar regulation for Airbnb, people who rent out Airbnbs, that some kind of a thing? No, just, just a, an information package that the Airbnb owner signs a contract with you guys and says, every time a new person comes, I'm gonna give them this information back.
That, that's part of what we're looking at, and how we're gonna regulate it from Canada.
That, that was the piece that I was looking for in the natural business system. You think about all the businesses that are involved in this, that would actually be fact.
So it's not, um, I missed part of Chris's answer to Renee there, uh, but I assume what I already knew that it's not regulated, right? Uh, like it's not.
We don't, we don't have regulation for that.
Yeah, yeah, because they're all private, but not, so, but they still have to be registered, right? Uh, or at least through the Airbnb.
I don't know about Airbnb.
Except to the owner?
It's, it's, it'll be very.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, talk about something else since we have a few minutes, but it directly involves, uh, communications and education in the public. Last year, uh, the camp, in one of your newsletters, you mentioned, uh, the blue-green algae situation. And basically, it confused the hell out of me, I, I read exactly how, and I contacted the Ministry of Environment and, um, and Madawar Conservation Authority. And basically, what, what the, the communication you guys did alluded to, but wasn't clear about was that you have to count on blue-green algae being in all of our waters all of the time. And that's the message I got back from, you know, the, those officials. But I didn't really get it out of here, basically, the, I, the information, the newsletter was like, we're not gonna tell you anymore about this and if you wanna know something, call the conservation authority. So that's what I did. And anyway, so that was, that was the answer from the experts. Um, and, and that, uh, and I, I did talk to Dave Flurry, is, uh, was with M and R, is a friend of mine, a fisheries biologist retired, so pulled in, I talked to him about it as well. And anyways, uh, so we really, those of us, and I was drawing water on the lake on both my properties, on, on Wolf Lake, from the lake. Um, today, they drilled a well on the second one, last year, I drilled a well there. Because if there's blue-green algae in the water, really, nobody should be drawing the water from the lake. And I, I put that on the Wolf Lake Facebook page, because there's really nothing you can do about that poison in the water. And that's what concerned me enough to say, okay, it's time to drill wells, fine, after living for fifteen years on the lake with that. But I, I don't think, I don't think that's been made clear to people, and when I talk to people, I try and explain that to them, because there's a lot of people, uh, who still draw water from Wolf Lake and every lake. And, uh, blue-green algae is just bad, bad news, and it's only going to get worse. So that was basically the watershed for me, when they said, it's always there, we're never gonna tell you that it's there, because then you think when we don't tell you that it's not there. And that was basically what I was told, was it's always there, so we don't, we, give alert. But I don't, is that understood by everybody? Do you guys know that?
Oh.
Can I, can I?
Sure.
Okay, so blue-green algae is not algae to begin with, it's bacteria.
Yeah.
Okay, they call it blue-green algae when the concentration is great enough that you can see it with the naked eye. Microscopically, it's almost there. Right, so typically, it wouldn't bother you until, until the concentration reaches a certain level. Once that concentration reaches that level, where you can see it with the naked eye, where it starts to look like an algae in the lake. So, um.
So, um, when, when they talk about a blue-green algae bloom, it's when the concentration there gets so high that you can see it. And that's when it reaches this dangerous level, uh, it's very hard to trace. This is just stuff that I'm recently getting knowledge of, sitting on Conservation Board now.
Okay.
But it's, it's very hard to trace, um, this year, they are, because Calendar, for instance, Calendar gives their water from Calendar Bay. And they had a bloom on the south, on the south shore of Calendar Bay last year.
Don't they have wells in them?
Yeah, well, around the lake, there, there are still, they have wells, yes, but uh, municipally, they, they get municipal water, but it is drawn from the lake, that's where it's.
I, I didn't know that, I thought they had a, a community one.
So that can put them in a panic mode, and so they have a, a plan in place where they're going to be auditing all of the septic beds around the South, I think it's the South Shore of Calendar Bay this year. The, so the plan is to audit every one of them, because tracking it down is the hard part, knowing exactly where it's coming from in that higher concentration, or the, the effluent is causing that higher concentration of bacteria to grow. So they're gonna, they're going to double or triple up the amount of audits that they're doing to find where the leakages are.
How do you do it?
I'm not sure how they do it.
They put, they put, I'm talking to them about this, cause I had a neighbor who didn't have a septic bed and was living there, uh, full time. Uh, so they put a dye down the toilet, and then when that leaks out of the septic bed, you can see, so that's leaking into the lake, you follow the green dye or purple dye.
Oh, wait, so you know that's supposed to be leaking out of your septic bed.
Well, they're trying to, but there, as somebody said, there are people for decades who aren't pumping the septic bed, which means, or tanks, so that means they don't have a septic bed. They've got something shooting water somewhere.
Yes, man.
I just, I hope that I can answer, if you know, if there is a, a, a rule about how often you have to do it, or what their, what their.
I can find that.
Chris, that would give you one to follow up.
There is, you know, like, yeah.
So, so Chris recorded that, she's gonna follow up with you and then send you the actual uh rule. It's Conservation Authority, right, that, that's.
Yeah.
I saw the picture, that's Conservation.
Who is driving those audits in Calendars, in the Madawar Conservation Authority or in the county?
No, it's, it's a, not a Madawar Conservation Authority, it's the uh, it's a sub-authority under them, it's the Source Water Protection Authority. So they're the ones who do the investigations with the Ministry of the Environment.
Surveying them.
Having off the subject, uh, we've had a lot of forest fire talk this year, um, in the areas, northern, I'm just wondering if the council or administration has been involved with the Ministry of Forestry or Natural Resources discussing anything like prescribed burns or fire, enhancing fire lines, or um, is there any way to communicate to people to clean up their lots?
I know we're on, we're on a fire meeting call every Thursday, from one to two, and they give you an idea of how many fires, how much resources, how many crews are available, that kind of thing.
That's quite a good one, I'm talking about preventing.
And they, we quit, I know we have something on our website right now about how far you should clear away from your home, and, and three meters is this, nine meters for that, whatever, that's on the website now.
On social media, I'm not sure if we put it on the website, I'm checking.
Okay, social media, and all the links are there, that says what you should do, and I know in our area, we call so a fire needs study that we're working on right now, because there are areas populated with a lot more pine trees, there are definitely more, you know, more incidents of fire, that kind of thing, so we, we're working through a fire needs study, correct? Yeah, so we're looking at that right now, and then that's gonna give us direction. One of the directions might be, though, this is another scary thing for taxpayers, that people that have island properties that pay taxes may want a fire vote.
On every lake?
Any lake that it's not accessible. So that's another issue, so those are the needs that we're gonna find out from that, you know? Right now, anybody I talk to that lives on islands, it's on wildfire.
So we got five minutes left, it's the, maybe one, one further comment question, one last question in regards to this communication, this, this, this. Why is there some stuff on Facebook, some stuff on website, why is it this?
Why can't we just do it?
Resources.
Resources, if you can make a post on one, you can make a post on the other.
Sounds like you got a social media volunteer there. So I just wanna thank council for doing this, but particularly for doing everything you do, because it's really a thankless job being elected official, uh, anywhere in Canada now, thank God it's not as bad as the US where I spent some time. But I just wanna say thank you, cause you guys step forward and you really don't get much um gratitude, and a lot of these decisions you make are going to be controversial, and you'll make enemies and friends, and I just thank you for doing it, for taking the time to do it, I appreciate it. A real respectful meeting, that was excellent, and good feedback, and, and hopefully everybody got their point covered.
There's, there's coffee and there's pop, uh, there's a donation jar there to help the haul out, to help yourself, to send the brooms or water if you want something to the room. I know John has made coffee over there, so help yourselves, should the mayor, the, the last words?
So again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I appreciate remarks, suggestions and input. We're gonna attempt to incorporate it in our strategic plan, we're gonna meet again next Tuesday night in Nipissing at the Community Center for another one of these, and uh, and it's exactly the same agenda, and again, it'll be different input and different people, but uh, council will work over these items, and hopefully we'll have a finished product or a, a draft available by this fall. And believe it or not, and some of you won't, but your input is appreciated. And it helps council in doing it, you know, during the, for this official plan, for this particular term of office. And uh, so I thank you all for being here, and I wanna add that uh, I'm not exactly sure of the hours, I know at eleven o'clock, Scarborough Social, Commanding Community Museum, on July first, starts at eleven, I think it goes to three?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, July first, and unfortunately, as a reminder, I'd like to say that due to the fire ban, we'll be postponing uh everything for Canada Day, for Nipissing Township, there'll be no fireworks on Canada Day. And uh, because we think that we have to set an example, because if we set off fireworks, every idiot in this country's gonna do the same. And we are just gonna compound the problem we're having, forest fires as it is. And if you do see fireworks, call the fire department. Because, again, it's not in the RFP, but any residue, any fireworks that cause a fire, that person will be charged by the M and RF. And it starts at twenty-five hundred, goes to twenty-five thousand, and possibly three months in prison, so I just wanna put that out there, because I'm one of these guys that live on an island, there's no fire protection, and I hope no idiot is setting off my pine tree, so.
You have a fire pump?
I do, I have two of them, and I run them every day to water the garden, and now somebody's complaining that the lake's dropping. Not quite sure where to go with that, but I thank you all very much for coming tonight, and uh, watch wildlife on the way home.